Regular meeting for Monday, May 13th, 2024 at 6:00 PM. We call the roll, please.
Mr. Habermill.
Here.
Mrs. Innes.
Here.
Mrs. Russell.
Here.
Mrs. Step.
Here.
Mr. Massey.
Here.
Mr. Freeman.
Here.
Four members present.
All right, I'd like to invite our students or citizens of the month to come up to the microphone here, please. All right, step right up here. What's your name?
Alex.
Alex. What grade are you in?
I'm in second.
What would you like to be in the club?
A vet.
A vet, that's awesome. Have you ever been to a vet? What's your name?
I'm Alex.
And what grade are you in?
Third.
Third grade. And what do you like to be in the club?
A singer.
A singer. What's your name?
Hannah.
What grade are you in?
Kindergarten.
What would you like to be in the club?
A vet.
That's other vet, that's good. Best favorite partner?
My name is Carla. And I'm in kindergarten. And I want to be a police officer.
What's your name, lady?
Chance.
What grade are you in?
First grade.
First grade. What would you like to be in the club?
I'm in the first grade.
All right. Congratulations to you guys. Please stand for the pledge release, please. Just turn and face the flag.
Play it for us, guys.
All right. You guys start us off, okay?
Let's leave this to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right.
Congratulations, good job.
Item four is our legislative report.
I just have one thing tonight. It's about House Bill 250, which we've been following. It went to the Senate, had some amendments made, now went back to the House where it was passed. It is now on its way to the governor for signature. The big thing I wanted to mention about that is one of the amendments that was made to it is in regards to cellphone usage in schools. It appears the amendment is going to require each public school to adopt a policy governing the use of cellphones by students during school. And it also does require the Department of Education to adopt a model cellphone policy that could be used by districts. So we'll just have to keep an eye out for that and then see what we want to do from there. That's all I have.
Good. Thank you. Item five is our student liaison report. I believe we've got the junior high Sailor Way Drama Club here today. Come on up, guys.
They did Willy Wonka.
So this is Mr. Seeley, and they recently put on a production of Willy Wonka, so we'll let you tell us about it.
Good evening. Whoa. Take that back. Good evening. My name is Alan Seeley. I'm the advisor to the Drama Club and the director of this year's middle school production, Willy Wonka Jr. I'd like to thank the school board and the Vermillion Local Schools for their support, as the production would not have been successful without them. Programs like Drama Club and the play provide many of the students opportunities to express themselves and put themselves out on the stage. Every year, we're pretty impressed with these students' talents and how many of them come out of their shells in the spotlight. This also gives students a chance, who want to be backstage, the option to do so. Our production this year includes 75 middle schoolers, ages four or grades four through seven, and I could not be more proud of these individuals participating and their contribution to the play. Here are just a few of the cast members to give you a glimpse as to what the show looked like. I just wanted to take a quick second. We have some guys that would like to come up and speak on their behalf of the production and what they think of Drama Club.
Hello. My name is Drew Murray, and I've been in Drama Club for a couple of years, and it really helped me be my character, Willy Wonka. The gigs that we do, it helps improve our acting. And throughout being in the musicals, I was a lead last year too. It was my first musical, and it was so much fun. So learning how to do it here will help me improve into high school, and I'm grateful for that.
Hi, my name is Harper Stetts. I play Mrs. Loop in Willy Wonka Jr., and I'm also the choreographer for the show. And I've been in Drama Club since in fifth grade, when we did like Stacks of Wax, and also last year too, when we did My Baby Birdie. And I could not thank Mr. Seeley enough for all that he's taught me throughout all the years. And it's improved me and everybody else's experience with theater onstage or offstage, and just giving people background if they ever want to break out their shell and go onstage. Thank you.
And I'd like to say on everyone's behalf, if you can agree with me, we've had an awesome year. Right?
Yes, of course.
And it couldn't be better, so thank you.
Thank you.
Great job, guys. Thank you for coming in. Item six, student board member report.
So I have that today. I wanted to talk about the evening of excellence, which was last Thursday. There were over 100 people that got recognized. There were different awards. They ranged from the arts, to the music awards, to the foreign language awards. I think it was really cool to see our school just celebrate different academic backgrounds, because there's different people. You have the athletic people in high school, you have the arts people, music people, and I think it's cool that we celebrate all of them in one night. There were athletic awards as well. The Sailor Award, which is a new award, I think we implemented like two years ago. That's for people that are in four or more activities, and I know a decent amount of people won that, which is cool, because four or more activities is a decent amount for a high school people. So I thought that was cool. And then we had four people, Reagan was one of them, that won the Sailor Trophy, which is when you get nine or more of our seed letters. So that was kind of our summary of the night, and I thought it was cool just to see how our school helps promote different ways and not just one way of academic excellence in our school.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Item seven is a presentation from Lori Brody, Northwest Regional Liaison for the Auditor of State's Office. Yep.
Good evening. Good evening. Can you hear me now?
Yep, just fine.
I am so happy to be here this evening from the State Auditor's Office, and I am here to present the Vermillion Local School District with the Auditor's State Award. And on behalf of State Auditor, keep favor, I just want to give you a little brief description of what it means. It puts Vermillion Local School District in a very select group. We audit about 6,000 entities every year, and only about 8% of the entities qualify for this award, which is a clean audit. And most people would say, first, what does the State Auditor do? We don't do property taxes, we don't do any of that. The State Auditor's Office is the department that audits all your government, and schools, counties, cities, villages, anybody that spends taxpayer dollars has to have a state audit by law. So they don't get a choice. Hopefully, we do a good job with our customer service and whatnot, but we come in and audit each entity. So to get a clean audit, as you can see, is very hard to be in that group. And just to tell you what they have to need, in case you're not aware of what they do within the school. The entity must file their financial report with the State Auditor within 150 days of your fiscal year end. To have a clean audit, you can have no findings for recovery, material citations, material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, single audit findings, or question costs. You get a management letter, and you can have no comments related to ethics referrals, question costs less than $10,000, lack of timely reports submission, reconciliation issues, failure to obtain your audit, findings for recovery less than $100, or any public meeting or public records and corrections. So basically, you can have no financial problems or concerns. But I'd like to come first, because I think it represents the hard work, especially in the school of everybody that works here, because I think it takes each employee, you know, such a group of favorite employees, to do the right thing every day, so that no mistakes happen. But I also like to recognize the superintendent and the school board, because I think you do an excellent job accounting for every dollar in the school. And I want to recognize especially your treasurer and all of their staff, just to clinch her for their outstanding leadership and just their commitment to fiscal integrity. So on behalf of State Auditor, favor, I just thank you for doing such a good job, and present you with this award this evening.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations, Justin. Great job by your office.
Thank you.
Item eight, presentation by Andy Stillman.
Thank you so much for having me. I've got some proclamations from the Ohio State Senate. If I could have Claire Bartholomay, Lauren Ficker, Riley Curran, and Brooke Jenkins, please come up here. Riley's got a baseball game, so we'll get her in. So the first is both from State Senator, President of the House Senate Matt Hoffman and Senator Nathan Manning. On behalf of members of the Senate of the 135th General Assembly of Ohio, we are pleased to commend Claire Bartholomay, who is receiving 23, 24, All Lorraine County Division II First Team honors in girls' basketball. I'll read Riley's, even though he's not here. On behalf of the members of Senate of the 135th General Assembly of Ohio, we are pleased to commend Riley Curran, who is being named to the 23, 24, All Lorraine County Division II First Team Boys Basketball. Next, honoring Lauren Ficker for athletic achievement. On behalf of members of the Senate of the 135th General Assembly of Ohio, we are pleased to extend a special recognition to Lauren Ficker, placing second in the 105 weight class at the 2024 OHSA Girls State Wrestling Tournament. Finally, I have a resolution from Senator Manning for honoring Brooke Jenkins. It reads, "Whereas in a society that seeks to teach the future leaders of our state and nation the fundamentals of self-reliance and the rewards of individual effort, athletic competition has become a valuable educational tool. The sport's contributing to development of countless youth. We're happy to congratulate such a fine athlete as Brooke Jenkins. Therefore, be it resolved that we, the members of the Senate of the 135th General Assembly of Ohio, in adopting this resolution, applaud Brooke Jenkins on her 2024 state championship, and extend best wishes for continued success. And be it further resolved that the clerk of the Senate transmit a duly authenticated copy of this resolution to Brooke Jenkins." Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Congratulations. Item nine is a presentation. Pat Graves, Jen Higley, Kelly Pankost, and Stacy Webb will present proposed travel trips to New York City and France.
Well, first, we want to talk about how much we value student travel, and that student travel is so important for our families here. You get to actually see places that they read about, that they care about, surprising pictures of, but to be there is such a better experience. We were just in France. The beaches there, enormity of the students, and it's just unbelievable to watch them as they experience that. So we are proposing two trips. I think we're being overachievers this evening. One is to New York City, which would be in December of this year, for students who will be juniors and seniors. So that's the classes of 25 and 26. All of our students here at VHS, plus our EWE students and our CCP students, would be all able to go to that. We're going to see all the great stuff in New York City, the 9/11 memorial, the Jackson Liberty, Ellis Island, the Broadway Show. We'll go up to one of the big observation platforms, one of the Hospital Lawrence buildings, one of the observatory, Central Park, Rockefeller Center. I think it'll be particularly beautiful at Christmas time. It should be really amazing here. Hopefully, the weather is good. It is a little dicey, but I think it makes sense later in the year there. So we are working with a new travel company, DC Adventures. We priced out trips with a couple of different companies, and we decided on this one based on price and based on the itinerary that they gave us. And they are a company based out of New Jersey, so I think that they will be able to give us a good price for that New York trip, because there's a lot of people there. There's a refund and cancellation policy, as you can see there. Any questions about the New York trip? The price, 9.5, maybe 9.50. They had a payment of our restaurant that just came back about an hour ago. We are going to require cancellation insurance, which is $119. We did that with the Washington DC trip last fall, and we had four or five students who said cancellation insurance, all the way up to the dating tour. So consider that, and any other questions as well. Can I answer any questions about the New York trip? I had to present what I was looking for. And in the same vein, after having come back from a very successful European trip, first since the 2020 shutdown, we said, "Let's go big again." So we're dreaming big with Paris, Barcelona, the French Riviera, and Rome. We are going with the same company that we did before. We did price round, and this is still the best price and best tour package to recruit as many students as possible. Two years, a little less than two years out, gives better payment opportunities for our young travelers, something we've been doing for quite a long time. And that's what we're at on that. Questions?
Just regarding both trips, do you guys have, do you normally do fundraisers to try and defray any of the cost, or?
We haven't. We haven't, although we have had parents at the helm of some, and we have very successful for Washington DC. And our EF tour company has individual tour donation pages for the travelers who sign up there. So it's not spread among, it's asking the family just for them. It's not something we're against, for sure. It's just finding the right one that benefits everybody without buying the job.
All right, thank you.
I just want to say how much I appreciate you doing this. I've said this to Pat before. It's a huge responsibility and undertaking for you to do this. You don't have to do it, and I know you enjoy it, but I sincerely appreciate you giving our students the opportunity. And I know how much work and effort goes into it.
It is the hardest thing that I've ever done professionally, and most reporting.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 10 is public participation on agenda items. This is a brief opportunity to speak on any items that appear on the agenda. We didn't have anyone signed up to speak tonight, so I'm going to assume that there are no questions on the agenda. Item 11 is the superintendent's report and/or recommendations.
I recommend that the board approve Kurt Habermell as overnight chaperone for the seventh grade Chicago trip for this school year.
I'll move. I'll second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Habermill.
Abstain.
Mrs. Innes.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Step.
Yes.
Mr. Massey.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Motion approved, three, zero, and one abstention.
Item 12 is the treasurer's report and/or recommendations.
Thank you. A, recommend a resolution for the board to approve the financial report for April 2024, and that's attachment A.
I'll move.
I'll second.
All right, first, we'll start with revenues, taking a look at our general funds. Through the month of April, we've received $24 million in general fund revenue, compared to $24 million in fiscal year '23, and $23.2 million in fiscal year '22. The district is on pace to collect its historical average revenue. Moving on to food service. Through the month of April, we received $701,000 compared to $717,000 at this time last year, and $807,000 in fiscal year '22. Again, the district should expect to see its food service revenue stay within its historical averages. And then taking a look at all funds for revenue. Through the month of April, the district has received $26.8 million in all funds, compared to $26.6 million at this time last year, and $29.6 million in fiscal year '22. Again, the district is on pace to collect its historical average revenue. Moving on to the expenditure side, looking at the general fund. Through the month of April, the district has expended $22.2 million from the general fund, compared to $22.00 last year at this time, and $19.4 million in fiscal year '22. As such, the district is on pace to spend similar to last year, but slightly higher than its historical average in expenditures. Looking at the food service, through the month of April, we've expended $757,000, compared to $732,000 at this time last year, and $744,000 in fiscal year '22. Again, the district is on pace to spend its historical average in the food service funds. And then expenditures for all funds through the month of April, we've expended $25.9 million, compared to $25.2 million at this time last year, and $23.9 in fiscal year '22. As such, we're on pace to spend slightly more than our historical average. Looking at cash in our general fund. Through the month of April, we currently have a total of $19.1 million in cash, compared to $20.9 at this time last year, and $21.7 in fiscal year '22. Our food service fund through the month of April has a total of $360,000 in cash, compared to $363,000 at this time last year, and $243,000 in fiscal year '22. And then taking all of our funds for the cash balance, looking through the month of April, we have a total of $22.6 million, compared to $25.7 million at this time last year, and $27.4 in fiscal year '22. We do have a couple negative accounts. We have the 300, the athletic account, it's negative $27,000, which is typical for this time of year. Normally, we transfer right around $30,000 at the end of the year. Our federal funds, and our 516 IDEA, our 572 Title I, 584 Title IV, 587 pre-IDEA, and our 590 Title II funds are all negative. Just last week, I should say, or at the end of this week, at the end of last week, I submitted a project cash request, ODE. So all of that money will be coming our way. ODE is responsible for $91,000 of that, which is on its way. And then the general fund's responsible for the $27,307.40. On the investment side, through the month of April, we've earned a total of $527,905.25 in interest, compared to $245,166.22 at this time last year. It's a difference of $282,739.30, or 115% more in interest this year than last year.
Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Innes.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Step.
Yes.
Mr. Massey.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Motion approved, four, zero. Letter B, recommend a resolution for the board to approve the following donations. $260 from Bruno Reyes for 41 students to attend the zoo. $204.53 from BSN My Team Shop to the girls' basketball program. $40 anonymous donation to the SMS Principals Fund. A $200 anonymous donation to two eighth grade students attending the Washington DC trip. $250 from the Vermillion Lions Club to VHS Speech and Debate. $300 from the Athletic Boosters Club to the Athletic Department. $1,500 from Grace United Methodist Church to VHS Esports. Excuse me, Tiffany Flowers donated the flowers for the May Day celebration. $517 anonymous donation to the Middle School CBC Classroom. And $2,000 from Grace Community Kitchen to pay outstanding school for graduation.
I'll move.
I'll second.
The district always appreciates these generous donations, and they really go a long way toward helping out our different groups, so outstanding. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Innes.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Step.
Yes.
Mr. Massey.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Motion approved, four, zero. And C, recommend a resolution for the board to approve the five-year forecast, and that is attachment B.
I'll move. I'll second.
All right, I gave everybody a handout of the forecast. Starting on the first page, the purpose of the five-year forecast, it's really for three things. It's to engage the Board of Education and the community in long-range planning and discussions of financial issues facing the school district. Number two, it's to serve as a basis for determining the school district's ability to sign contracts associated with continuing operations. And number three, it's to provide a method for the Department of Education and the Auditor of State's Office to identify school districts with potential financial problems. So moving on to the property taxes. That's going to be line 101, 102, and 105 in the forecast. Property taxes may account for 77.4% of the district's revenue. Property tax revenue includes general property taxes, which is your real estate, public utility, personal property taxes, and the state share of local property taxes. That's the homestead and rollback. On the page, you should be looking at the historical property values. Property values, they have been increasing, an average of 2.7% since 2013. And the last four years, property taxes have actually gone up 4.9%. Property tax collection rates have historically been strong and are forecasted to continue. And this calendar year, 2024, both Erie and Lorraine County are holding their triennial updates. So we'll be seeing new rates coming up next year here. Moving on to the historical property tax collections, the bar chart there. So House Bill 920 prohibits tax collection to grow with residential property values for voted millage. So for example, looking at that chart, in fiscal year '12, fiscal year 2012, we collected $14.4 million in property tax, that's your real estate, compared to $13.2 million in 2023. The district has averaged a negative 0.7% annual growth in property tax revenues since 2012. Now, the state, they've also reduced the number of credits for your homestead and your rollback. So that actually went from $2.6 million in 2012 to $1.6 million in 2023. But we have seen growth.
But we have seen growth in the utility companies, public utility, personal property tax, which accounts for all of our tax revenue growth really since 2012. This went from $139,000 in 2012 to $4.5 million in 2023. So from that entire time, our property tax collections have actually gone down slightly. So has our homestead and rollback. And then that increase that we see that keeps us level is from the increase in personal property tax.
So that, what drove that huge growth in the personal, in the personal property and utilities?
Back in the day, they switched it from the CAT tax, which was included in the property taxes, and then they created a new public utility, personal property tax, and started applying that to the utility companies, the railroads, the electric companies, power companies.
Gotcha.
Ohio's one of the, maybe the only, or one of just a handful of states that doesn't allow your assessed levies, property value levies, to increase with the, with the property values. They're frozen at what you pass them at, and that's why typically schools have to keep going back to the ballot to ask for more money because their revenue streams don't grow.
Can't grow with the property values.
They don't grow, and they're also then, you know, fighting inflation, you know?
So moving to the next chart there, this is going to show the state side of things. State revenue accounts for 17.9% of the revenue. Beginning in fiscal year '22, Ohio adopted the Fair School Funding Plan. Now, that plan seeks to base the state's per pupil amounts on actual expenses faced by a district rather than a residual budgeting approach. Under this plan, the state's share of the calculated base cost for Vermillion equals $1,607 per pupil. And for that same student, that's $8,407 is what the state pays for that same student to attend a private school. So Vermillion local schools get $1,607, private school gets $8,407 for that same student. In fiscal year '23, the average per pupil expenditure in the state of Ohio was $15,435. For Erie County, it was $15,867. And then for Vermillion local schools, our average expenditure per pupil was $16,715. However, ours is slightly higher because all of our capital outlay, all of the improvements on our buildings are coming directly from our general fund, where other schools do typically have another dedicated funding source for that, which offsets that expenditure. Our unrestricted funding, which is what you see in the first line there for the state revenue, our unrestricted funding has actually decreased $85,410 or 3.2% since 2014. So between state and local revenue, which accounts for 95.3% of our revenue, all have declined from 2012, with the exception of public utility, personal property tax. Looking at our historical and forecasted revenue, from 2018 to 2023, the district averaged revenue growth of 0.9% per year. The district is forecasting an average of 2.3% revenue growth per year from new construction, increases in property value, which is the triennial and the sexennial update, which will also happen in 2027, and higher interest rates, science investments. And for example, Star Ohio was one of the vehicles that we have available to us for our investments. Star Ohio rates have risen sharply since 2022. Star Ohio, on average, their average rate of return in 2020 was 0.71. In 2021, it was 0.08. In 2022, it was 1.69. And then in 2023, it jumped up to 5.2%. And in 2024, it jumped again, 5.49 is the average. Because of this change, the district moved all of its liquid investments, which we were earning 2% on at the times that we were, that Star was at 0.08. We moved all of our liquid investments from that 2% and put it all into Star Ohio, earning, you know, about 3.5% more than we were before. And that's reflected in those financials when I read the investments on there.
Yep. Up 115%.
Yep.
Yeah.
That's really the revenue side. Moving on to the expenditure side, is your personnel services. So this is going to be your largest expense, 54.9% of total expenditures. Personnel services, this is going to be employee salary and wages. It's going to include extended time, severance pay, supplemental contracts, and overtime. Personnel services have been offset by a recoding of general fund salaries to the federal funds in fiscal year '22. So if you're looking at that chart, fiscal year '22, there's a large drop and then a sharp increase in fiscal year '23. So a couple things. So A, some of those, a lot of those salaries were recoded to the federal funds in 2022. And in fiscal year 2022, we only made 26 of 27 pays on their pay schedule. In fiscal year '23, we moved to a 24-pay schedule, and that year, we had to absorb the 27th pay from the fiscal year '22 pay. So not only did that force a larger salary expenditure in fiscal year '23, which is normalized in 2024, but it also made it even less in 2022 than it should have been. So salaries are anticipated to increase in an average of 2% through the end of the Moving on to the benefits, benefits are a total of 19.2% of the budget, and they're forecasted to increase over the next five years. This consists of retirement for all employees. This includes your workers' compensation, severance pay, if any, Medicare, unemployment, and all health-related insurances. So from 2018 to 2023, the district averaged a 3.1% increase in benefit cost. However, the district is estimating an annual increase of 6.5% from 2024 to 2028. The rising cost of inflation is the main driver in the increased cost for health insurance. Moving on to purchase services, purchase services account for 15.4% of the forecast, the district's forecasted expenditures. This is tuition paid to external providers, this is our utilities, this is services performed by outside vendors. The Fair School Funding Plan, again, if you're looking at some of those drop-offs from fiscal year '21 to '22, purchase services is forecasted to increase in an average of 1.5% per year. In fiscal year '21 to fiscal year '22, that was the implementation of the Fair School Funding Plan, which removed the expenditure for open enrollment and community school transfers, and the reason you're seeing that drop. So it didn't really go anywhere, it's just the state changed how everything's funded. The next one, moving on to capital outlay, this is going to account for half a percent, but the district's in need of new buses, new vans, the middle school needs an elevator, the high school needs a new roof, and other repairs and improvements to its buildings and grounds. Something to note, out of the 611 school districts in Ohio, 518 school districts have a permanent improvement levy, and 432 of them have a bond levy. The number of school districts that operate without a bond levy or a permanent improvement levy totals 56 schools in the whole state of Ohio, and Vermillion's one of them. So the upcoming need for buses and an elevator and a roof, these will significantly decrease our cash reserves if the only funding for the district comes from the general fund. Moving on to the revenues over expenditures, the reason we look at this chart, it gets a good sense of a school district's fiscal health. Positive number indicates that a school district spent within its revenues for that fiscal year. A negative number indicates that the school district spent, or is trending to spend, more revenue than it brings in for the year. So typically, a forecast has estimated a negative number because the forecast is showing the trend and does not include future changes or adjustments to that trend. From fiscal year '23 to the end of the forecast, the district anticipates to spend more money than it receives. And then we'll take a look at a forecast snapshot. Looking at this, we anticipate revenues to grow from $25.5 million to $28.2 million, while expenditures are anticipated to grow from $27.1 to $29.8 million. We are projecting negative results of operations throughout the forecast, ending with a fund balance of $3 million in cash in 2028. $2.8 million if you're actually looking at the forecast, which doesn't include the encumbrances from June 30. So what you're seeing here is slightly off by $200,000 from the forecast. Just some final comments on everything that we just said here. The district will need to invest in its infrastructure and components as they age. Without having a dedicated funding source for replacement, the general fund will be tasked with paying for these replacements. Also, the district will need to keep an eye on staffing levels, particularly in years 2024 and beyond, as our expenditures continue to climb. And again, just out of the 611 school districts in Ohio, 518 of them have a PI levy and 432 of them have a bond levy, which puts us one of 56 schools without operating, without either of them. Passing a levy that dedicates money to its infrastructure will extend our cash reserves further than our current forecast is shown. Okay?
All right. Any questions, comments? All right. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Habermell.
Yes.
Mrs. Innis.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Step.
Yes.
Mr. Massey.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Motion approved, four, zero.
Item 13 is the consent agenda. The superintendent and treasurer recommend that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda items. Action by the board in adoption of the consent agenda means that all items are adopted by one vote unless a member of the board, the treasurer, or the superintendent requests that any such item be removed from the consent agenda and voted on separately. Item A, approve the minutes of the April 9, 2024 regular meeting and April 24, 2024 special meeting. Item B, approve revisions to district policies for first read as listed on the agenda. Item C, approve the annual review of district policies as listed on the agenda. Item D, approve the update of the compliance officer to assistant superintendent to the following board policies as listed on the agenda. Item E, approve the service agreement for the 2024-25 with the ESC of Lorraine County for specialized district services, professional development, and educational programs. Item F, approve the 2024-25 service agreement with North Point Educational Service Center. Item G, approve the agreement for the educational services with the Lorraine County Board of Developmental Disabilities and Vermillion Local School District. Sorry about that. Item H, approve the Erie County Health Department School Nursing Contract for two LPNs for the 2024-25 school year at $42 per hour. Item I, approve the junior-senior class trip to New York City, December 18 through the 20th, 2024. Item J, approve the junior-senior trip, March of 2026, to Paris, Barcelona, French Riviera, Monaco, and Rome. Item K, approve the Medicaid School Program Service Agreement with the Healthcare Process Consulting, Inc., from July 1 of 2024, ending on June 30 of 2027, at a cost of $7,500 per year. Item L, approve the memorandum of agreement for college credit plus dual enrollment between BGSU and Vermillion Local School District. Item M, approve the memorandum of understanding for sheltering and mask care facilities between Vermillion Local School District and the Church of the Open Door, Harbertown Community Church, and United Church of Christ Congregational in the event of an evacuation of staff and students. Item N, approve the following employment action: retirement, Tamela Griffith, effective December 31, 2024; resignations as listed on the agenda; maternity leave as listed on the agenda. Item O, approve the one-year additional duty contracts for the remainder of the 2023-24 school year to the following as listed on the agenda. Item P, approve the one-year non-teaching supplement contract for the remainder of the 23-24 school year to the following as listed on the agenda. Item Q, approve the one-year classified limited contract for the remainder of the 2023-24 school year to those listed on the agenda. Item R, approve the one-year classified limited contract for the 2024-25 school year to those listed on the agenda. Item S, approve the two-year classified limited contract, beginning with the 2024-25 school year, to those listed on the agenda. Item T, approve the one-year classified substitute contract for the 2024-25 school year to those listed on the agenda. Item U, approve the 2023-24 summer school contract at the per diem rate and up to 55 hours to those listed on the agenda. Item V, approve the one-year certified limited contract for the 2024-25 school year to those listed on the agenda. Item W, approve the two-year certified limited contract for the 2024-25 school year to those listed on the agenda. Item X, approve the continuing certified contract, beginning with the 2024-25 school year, to Kimberly Judd. Item Y, approve up to 20 hours at the project rate of $34 per hour for preschool evaluations between 6124 and 81524 to those listed on the agenda. Item AA, approve Brooke Spafford, Director of Preschool, for up to 50 hours at her per diem rate for the NAEC accreditation and evaluations from 6724 to 73124. Item AB, approve extended service hours for those listed on the agenda. Item AC, approve the payment of $175 for running the time system for JV Track Invitational to Cody Gregory. Item AD, approve the technology workers' contract for the summer of 2024 at $15 per hour to those listed on the agenda. I don't think we've ever run out of alphabet before.
No.
Are there any items to be removed from the agenda? Okay. Can I get a motion to accept?
I'll move.
I'll second.
All right. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Habermell.
Yes.
Mrs. Innis.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Step.
Yes.
Mr. Massey.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Motion approved, four, zero.
Item 14, dates and location of upcoming board meetings. Meetings will be held in the Vermillion High School Commons at 12:50 Sanford Street, Vermillion, at 6:00 PM unless otherwise noted. We have a regular meeting on Monday, June 10, a regular meeting on Monday, July 8, 2024, and a regular meeting on Monday, August 12, 2024. Item 15 is public participation. We have no one signed up, so is there anyone? Okay. So item 16, we're going to adjourn to executive session pursuant to the Ohio Revised Code, Section 121.22. I hereby move that the board adjourn to executive session for the purpose of considering employment of public officials and for the purpose of matters to be kept confidential.
I'll move.
I'll second. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Habermell.
Yes.
Mrs. Innis.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Step.
Yes.
Mr. Massey.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Motion approved, four, zero. The time is 6:49.
6:49.
Okay. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move. I'll second.
All right. Call the roll. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right. Meeting adjourned. It is 8:05 PM.